All right, welcome ladies and gentlemen. Today is August 30th. It is right now 5:31 PM. We have a special meeting of the city council going over just general city council rules and rules of order, Robert's Rules of Order, and just different things, basically cleaning up shop for our council meetings. Madam Clerk, can you take a roll call, please?
Oh, Gabe Robella.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Moll Biegen. Nancy Reyer.
Here.
Robert Kasten. Ray Muscat.
Here.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So I just want to give just a general outline as far as what this meeting is all about. We've noticed some of the meetings sometimes extending beyond comfort level. And this thing, I'm sorry.
The pledge.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance at this point.
On the study session?
We don't usually do it, but it's okay, we'll do it anyway. Well, I have Councilman Tom Wenzel go ahead and lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So the purpose of this particular meeting, we found sometimes the meetings would take a little bit longer that maybe we're comfortable with, and then we just wanted to make sure that we go over some of the rules of order that we're gonna be, that we have been following and will continue to follow, and then also, like I said, cleaning up shop a little bit, just like we do with our house, just like we do in our business, just, you know, maybe once a year we should do something like this, clean up shop, tweak everything, and then make sure it's still going in the right direction. And the primary purpose of this is to make sure that there's some sort of like order and decorum, you know, whether it's us, whether it's residents, whether it's administrators, anybody and everybody, we just wanna make sure that the meeting is going forward in a productive manner. That's the primary reason for this. So this is not gonna be in any type of specific format or formality, basically, we're just gonna be discussing it, and everybody will be, will have the opportunity to, of course, speak. So I'm gonna start with just a couple of items that have been of concern. I did, we did put together a meeting with the help of our chair, not chair, I'm sorry, of our Chief of Staff, Mariana Hernandez, and through MML, with Coco is her name, and she came and did a class for us, I think about three, three and a half hours, two and a half hours, something like that.
Yeah, three hours.
So, yeah, almost three hours, and that helped a lot, and I wrote a lot of notes down from that particular meeting that we're gonna be hopefully implementing, and I will go from there. So a couple of items from the meeting that I'm gonna go ahead and start with. First of all, on each motion, each council member, and council members, you're welcome, of course, to open this up to discussion if you'd like, but each council member should only speak no more than two times per motion. So in other words, if there's a motion on the floor, Councilman Muscat makes a motion, you know, I motioned that we, I don't know, build a park or whatever, any other council member may comment on that, but no more than twice. There really doesn't, there should be no need to comment on something two, three, or even four times, and that will force each council members, myself included, to tweak it and clean it up in a way where you're, we're not, for lack of better words, talking too much.
Council Chair?
Yes, Councilman. And we'll go ahead and talk about each one, one by one.
And piggybacking on that, if you ever turn the TV on, watch C-SPAN where they have the legislative bodies of the Senate of either state or Senate, they're allotted X amount of time to speak.
Correct.
We should also implement something like that, because if there's something that you need to say about a particular agenda item, you should have already have done this by reading the package, okay, and have your thoughts already jotted down.
I agree.
And it shouldn't take more than 30 seconds to speak your opinion, and then wait a second turn, if somebody has something, you can jot down a note and say it on your second turn.
I agree.
So I think we should be able to come to a conclusion amongst the seven of us of how much time that is, be it 30 seconds or one minute. I don't think it should take longer than a minute.
I 100% agree.
Okay.
And when I first came on council, probably about seven, eight years ago, when I first seen the rule of two minutes, in my brain at the time, I thought, how could, how could you put a thought together for two minutes? It's almost impossible. But I've come to find out that, yes, absolutely, it is possible.
Yes, it is.
We should all implement that. So, yes, absolutely agree. Any other comments on that particular item? How many councilmen? Go ahead.
Real quickly, a lot of times someone will say something, and it'll bring up something that you can, you think of that you didn't think of originally. So a lot of times, you know, in my case, I always listen to everyone, and then, oh yeah, I gotta, I gotta react to that or something like that.
Okay, and I can see that, but as long as we consciously try to focus on limiting the time as to as little as possible to still get our point across, and I do see your point, Councilman, but I'm just saying in general, try to keep it to right around two minutes. Now, keep in mind, like Coco said in our presentation, at the end of the day, there's no rule or law that we follow. We follow our own council procedures, which are put together by the council members through the years, and then putting together the different council rules of order, which we have already, was emailed to all of us by our clerk. But at the same time, so even the Robert's Rules of Order, we don't have to follow them, you know, per se specifically. We follow whatever rules we have put together. So technically, and it's a discretion as a council chair too, technically, I could have you, Councilman Ahmad, or anybody speak for nine, thank you, I have already, speak for nine and a half hours on one particular subject, but that would not be fair to the residents, or for the council members, or for the people in here. So try to limit that as much as you can to two minutes, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments on that?
Are we going to set a time limit here for us, and what's the consensus of how much time?
I would like, to me, to me, the way I would look at it, I'm just giving you my personal opinion, I think for the council members, not necessarily a time clock, because if there's something important, when you go a little bit over two minutes, that's okay, but let's try to be conscious of that two-minute factor, and at any time, we could look at the clock right above the clerk right there and be able to tell how much.
But are we gonna set a time so we can be conscious of the fact that, hey, I got two minutes to say what I gotta say, or a minute, we should come up with a time limit, and like I said, once we speak once, we wait for everybody else to speak, and then you get your second chance, and you should be able to, be able to rebut whatever somebody says.
If all of you guys would like to have us specifically timed, I don't mind, I just think if we're just conscious of that, I think we should.
I think there should be, personally, I believe there should be a rule, because if there's not a rule set in place, then it's just a free-for-all again.
Excuse me, Council Chair.
Yes.
That is in the procedures right now.
Right.
If you go to 502-26, number five, limitation of debate, no member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject.
I see that one.
Until every, until every other member choosing to speak thereon has spoken, and no member shall speak more than twice, so you're all good there.
Right.
And on any one subject, nor for longer than 10 minutes.
What was that?
So it says that.
What was that, 502 what?
What's that?
What was that number?
502-26, item number five.
Yeah, I seen that.
Limitation of debate.
Yeah, we've addressed that, but here's the thing, it says 10 minutes, you don't want it to be.
Right.
I don't see 502.
So you wanna change that.
I don't see 502.
I'd be okay personally with changing, I think 10 minutes.
Yeah, you wanna change that, if we have 10 minutes, you don't want 20 minutes, right?
No, no.
All right, guys.
So for, you could put for two minutes each, if that's what in fact you wanna do, then we'll.
To make it official, you mean?
If you're gonna change it, if you're gonna change it.
So without voting, because we're not voting, but I just wanna make sure we wanna vote in that direction, are all of us as council members comfortable with the fact of switching this thing pretty much to two minutes per council member when there's a particular statement that you wanna make?
Can you not find it yet still?
I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry, pro temp, did you find it?
Yeah, I finally found it, but.
It says 10 minutes.
I think 10 minutes is way too much, because we have a tendency, in all of us, and I'm including myself in it, when I say we, me included, we have a tendency to speak about every, almost just about every single agenda item, and, and I'm gonna go further on this, and a lot of these questions should have been asked via email or a phone call to the director, so we could cut this stuff short. Now, you may not like what you get from them, and you can bring it up at a council meeting, but again, the time that we're spending on some of these agenda items is way overboard.
I agree.
Okay?
Okay.
And it's a repetition from one, once, one meeting to another meeting and back to another meeting, so I don't like the 10 minute, I like personally, like, me, it was only a minute, but if two minutes is satisfactory to the rest of the council meetings, that would be great.
I'm comfortable with two minutes, yes, Councilman.
What Coco suggested was no more than four minutes total.
So that's two.
So that's two minutes each time.
Yeah, I, yeah, if it's each time, two minutes, I think it's enough, but.
Yeah, that's funny.
Four minutes is too long.
Yeah, cause we get two minutes each time, and if you're gonna, if we're gonna be able to speak twice, you should be able to get your point across in four minutes.
So I think we're all comfortable with two minutes per session of speaking per council member. The whole thing is, the big question is, do you guys want it timed, or do you wanna just go on the honor system?
I think it's honor system.
I mean, I agree with Councilman Baydun, honor system, we can look up at the clock there, say, I got, you know, roughly two minutes to say what I gotta say, let me say it.
Okay, and if it gets out of hand, then we can implement actual timing.
And then that's up to the council chair then, to kind of peek up there when somebody starts speaking, and then, you know, if it goes on to three, four minutes, you know.
I'll maybe point at my watch or something.
Yeah, okay. And then Council Chair, also, I agree with the councilman, I mean, some of these meetings, going back and forth, going on one agenda item, I think, two city council meetings, just about 45 minutes on one agenda item, that's way too long.
Well, okay, so during certain council meetings, let's not forget, whatever it's sound like, for example, on the Warren Valley Golf Course, there's a pretty controversial situation, anything like that, it's, no matter how you slice it up, it's always gonna be a little bit longer, but your standard stuff on a particular agenda item, no, it should not take that long. It's made of.
So, Council Chair, what I'm doing right now is I'm highlighting what section that you are discussing.
Right.
Making the changes, and if you'd like, I can just.
Yes.
Present them and go over with you.
Perfect, yeah, absolutely.
And then Dana's too.
Okay. Another item, so another item that I wrote from when we had the study session with Coco from MML, texting or calling during a meeting, that also has to be cut out by a lot of council members. So, you know, I know some of you will say, you know, sometimes there's emergencies, what have you, I don't know, I guess if it's such a huge emergency, maybe you could give your phone, maybe to the clerk, or the clerk's to Dana, maybe, and say, if you see a text from, I don't know, my mom, my wife, my brother, my sister, whatever, bring me the phone or something, I mean, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud here, but texting back and forth, or sometimes I've even seen calls being made, is not gonna be acceptable anymore, especially going back and forth with some of the residents in the audience, or maybe with somebody, the administration, I just don't think it's appropriate, honestly.
It also violates open meetings.
Yeah, it's just, it's wrong, period.
Can we have a, be given a timer now, so we don't use our cell phone as a timer? Is there a way?
That's something Mariana, our chief staff is gonna be working on, between her and all the deep.
If that next week, we can get it, at least a little small timer that we can just use.
I'm sure there's something on Amazon with some sort of remote.
Once we buy, well, once we buy one for the wall, okay, but I'm just saying, even for temporary, we get one there.
I do have one in the office that we used to use.
No, not that one.
Oh, come on.
You don't think that's an old march.
I have one at home, too.
About that, I'm gonna give one to the.
But here's the thing, there's not just that, the issue too, as Mariana said, is on Zoom, so if somebody's speaking on Zoom, unless they point a camera specifically at whatever item we have here for the timing, they won't know their time's off.
I know, but we're not even showing, you know, you could still do the board, I'm just.
No, we're trying to avoid the board, and Mariana said she's gonna look into it of a possibility of having Zoom automatically be on there somehow, so she's looking into that.
Okay.
Mariana's got that. Okay. Next item, ladies and gentlemen, being late to the meeting, this is, and I'm not addressing just today, so.
I really thought it was that.
Yeah, I know, okay. But being late to the meeting, we're all busy, we all have commitments, we all have things going on, we all have family, we all have businesses that we run, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but at the same time, you on your own, I hope nobody was forced, decided to run for office, so if you decide to run for office, and you take this thing seriously, as we should, please be here ideally, at the worst case, 10 minutes early, because you should be in, sit down, settled, your pack is in front of you, you're ready to roll. I commit to coming in early, I'm not gonna name the other ones that come in early, or the ones that come late, but let's take this thing seriously and show up on time, because waltzing in at the last second is not gonna make you an effective council member. This one shouldn't be said, but I'm just gonna straight up say it. Okay, next one, this one is per the rules of order, it is not my rule, it is not a dictatorship situation or anything along the lines of that, and I get it, sometimes there's, you know, someone needs to take a restroom break. If you need to take a restroom break, and I've addressed it with all you guys individually, but I'll just state it again, or for whatever crazy reason you have to leave for, you know, a minute or whatever it is, please go through the council chair, and the reason for going through the council chair is not a dictatorship, it's not an ego thing on my end or anything along the lines of that, because that's been like that forever. The primary purpose of that is there could be an important vote coming up, there could be something, let's say, I as a council chair am gonna be bringing up, and when I, I bring it up, or it comes up, and council person, you know, X, Y, and Z decides to go to the restroom, they're gonna miss out on a, on that particular vote or an important vote. So please go through the council chair, and then at that point, yeah, obviously, I'm not gonna say no unless I think it's, I'm very, very important that's coming up.
But Council Chair, so in that regard, how do we, like, I usually.
Nudge me.
Yeah, nudge Ray, or just, oh, you just get my attention, I don't know what you're saying, say, you know, you could verbalize it with your, with your, you know, bathroom, and I'll know what you mean.
Let's have a sign for it.
Yeah.
Then you text, my back teeth are floating.
Yeah, all right, so these are the items I want to go over, we talked about the four-minute rule that Coco gave us during the study session, she mentioned no council member should speak for no more than four minutes total, so if there's a motion, you'll have the first two minutes, and then you'll have maybe an additional two minutes if you're gonna come back with something else. So let's say a motion is made by Councilman Baydun, and his motion is, I don't know, we're gonna open up a new park, okay, and he mentions whatever he wants to mention after the motion, and then Councilman Wenzel says something else about it, and then Councilman Ahmad says something else, but then now Councilman Baydun wants to speak again on that subject. Again, we're going through on the honor system, try to keep that under two minutes each time, for a total of four.
Does the charter state that you're limited on time?
It says you're limited to 10 minutes, but to me, any council member that needs to have 10 minutes to say on one item, that's.
It's not a charter.
It's not a charter, no, 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 it's council rules.
Yeah, council procedure.
Yeah.
That we adopted.
Yeah, that we've adopted throughout the years through resolutions or what have you, but it's, 10 minutes is too long, I would quit, for I'll have every council member speak 10 minutes on every item, so it's way too long, and I think you'd agree it's too long.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I think four minutes per council member, and look, if it's something that's extremely important, maybe a council member needs a few more seconds, you know, it's, we're not getting that technical, but just be conscious of that, please.
Counselor Chair.
Okay, anybody else have, I have other things, but go ahead.
And, you know, and I'm just bringing up things that were brought up in that meeting by our parliamentarian, okay, and when the public addresses us or talks to us, we try to limit as much as we limit ourselves from speaking back to them. She says, you know, the Robert Rules of Order is to say, thank you for your comment, and let's not, you know, get it, because once we start speaking to them, that's when people start getting heated up.
Okay.
That was one thing that.
If you look here, so next one, not too much back and forth, and I'm gonna address that too.
And I understand that, but I don't want this just coming from one person, I mean, we got other council members that went to this, and they could chime in on it and see what they, what their feelings on it, and so, you know, that's, you know, we have the people coming up on agenda items that they speak of, and, you know, we had made a council rule when this was first adopted, when we became council people.
Correct.
That was seven years ago, that council people would not address them on agenda items, okay, that was an agenda item, we just accept what they were saying, we should not talk back with them, that will save us also some additional time.
Okay, so let me, let me, let me bring, so the newer council members a little bit of a history on what Councilman Muscat, and I had on here not too much back and forth. So when a resident comes up to speak on an agenda item, at one point, we changed the rules as a council body, probably, say, about four years ago, roughly?
You were on the council then.
We changed it to where when a resident comes up, you know, Resident Joe comes up and says, you know, you know, I wanna know, you know, you guys are gonna be voting on, you know, this balance sheet, or whatever it is, X, Y, Z item, and I don't think you guys should vote that way, and I just wanna know, where did you guys come up with this thing, or whatever it is that they're asking? A decision was made at time not to answer that person back, and just basically stare at them. I, and I'm taking this personally, I was totally against it, including right now, because to me, when a resident comes up, takes the time, the drive to the council meeting, stands in front of us, seven people that are supposed to represent that particular resident, and says, hey, I wanna know, you guys are gonna be spending $25,000 on carpeting, or you wanna update City Hall, or whatever it is, and I feel that this is absolutely ridiculous, because X, Y, and Z, and all we can do, just stare at them, and just say, thank you, to me, I find it wrong. What I think would work better would be to say to them, okay, well, you know, I appreciate your comment, and we're gonna be discussing the agenda item 7A.
That's exactly.
But if it needs to be answered, I think we should answer them.
But the thing is, but, but again.
Or not go into a debate about it.
But again, but again, when you have someone ask you a question like this, and it's almost like asking you what you're gonna vote on before we even bring a motion on it, we should not be saying, I'm against it, I'm gonna vote no, I'm gonna, you can't, you should never tell your vote before the actual vote starts.
Correct.
Okay, we've done that, all of us have done that at one point, I'm gonna vote no on this, well, you shouldn't say that, because you're, you're voting before the motion is either being made at that particular time. Now, if you, if you're debating on something, on, we make a motion to accept something, a council person say, well, in my, I don't like it because this, and this is why I'm gonna vote no, that's okay, because a motion's already made, but during the people coming up, you should never tell them what you're gonna vote on.
So in general, we're gonna say, we're saying to residents, okay, we're gonna be discussing that on item 7A.
And thank you for your opinion.
Yes, but if they ask a specific question that maybe we're not gonna be discussing on 7A, and they want an answer to it, to me, they're entitled to that.
And I think that should.
But we gotta keep it as short as possible.
And I think that should come from the council.
Yeah, I don't mind answering, and I do answer.
Unless another council person says council chair, and then wants to answer, because they happen to know, you know, like what Mo, Councilman Baydun and I, working on a certain thing, I'm not gonna, you know, get into detail, he may know that answer, and he knows that, you know.
Yeah, I agree.
And you'll say, okay, Council Chair, I do have an answer for this, okay, and that's completely good, completely good, but under normal circumstances, thank you, I will, you know, thank you for your consideration, coming up.
And we'll be discussing that 7A.
Council Chair?
Yeah.
And I just wanna say, I think many times when somebody came up here and said something, we, not many of us really bickered back.
So far, it's been short.
It's been very simple, it's been very short. I don't think we've really had, you know, many, other than the golf course, I don't think we've seen anything where anybody has kind of went back and forth, some.
I think the longest too has been the golf course and the animal ordinance, in my opinion.
Yes, and I think you did the most of the talking for the most part, and that was something I think this whole body voted unanimously on recently, about seven months ago, I'm gonna make that.
To be able to answer if we have.
Yeah.
But again, we're just, we're not gonna go into, the key point is not to go into a full discussion on it.
I agree.
You can answer the question if you have to, and then move on. Go get something. Wait, Mariana, I think, okay, go ahead, Council.
Yeah, I think when you got on the council, if I remember correctly, Chair, you said in Dearborn, they, you know, you need to be able, if it's a big issue, we're gonna vote to change the name of the city of Dearborn Heights to the city of the Stars, you know, people should be able, and we should be able to answer. You hit the nail on the head, answer them.
But not a discussion.
But not debate.
Right, not debate or go into a full discussion, because the resident also needs to know, you know, and all of us need to know is, obviously, on 7A, that's when we're gonna have the full-blown discussion on it.
Okay.
But Council Chair, don't, don't you think that's answer's gonna be the debate anyway?
Well, again.
Most of the time.
You know what I'll do, because that's the direction we wanna go, I think what I'm noticing here, it's gotta be like a kind of a compromise between the two, not not answer them at all, but not go into a full-blown debate.
I agree.
So the compromise is maybe, I'll answer them as a council chair, short and to the point, and I'll say, we're not gonna go into a full discussion on this, we'll be going over into a full discussion on this under 7A.
I mean, I like Councilman Muscat's suggestion, I mean, either they can discuss it, an agenda item, or if somebody has an answer, they, you know, they can.
But the point he's making is, like, let's say, with the point that Councilman Ray Muscat is making, like, let's say a resident comes up and says, you know, I wanna know how you guys feel about, you know, Isa Brothers taking over the golf course, let's say hypothetically, right? What he's referencing is, we shouldn't go into a debate where each and every council member gives their opinion on this.
I agree with him.
Because that's gonna happen on 7A, or AA, or 8D, but if they said, will you be discussing this, or are you guys gonna be considering whether it's Isa Brothers or somebody else taking the golf course, then I can answer them, yes, we'll be discussing that on 7A.
So what about if more than one council member had an answer for the question, and different answers?
If, if, if it's not gonna be discussed on 7A later on, then maybe you could have short, but the key thing is to, let's keep it as short and quick as possible.
Look, also, I wanna just say one more thing, Council Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
At the end of the day, every single one of you guys were elected by the people to give your concerns and represent this community, so if, you know, you feel that you wanna give an answer, and you should have by that, you know, the autonomy to be able to speak that, but just, you know, be understanding that we don't wanna be over here bickering back and forth, and I respect that, by the way.
Okay, but Council.
Well, quickly, yeah, I remember the evolution of the rule, and Councilwoman Horvath said, well, yeah, they can talk, but we can't answer it, and that was ridiculous. Now, and once or twice, people have got up and said, I wanna complain about my neighbor, they're not cutting their grass, and you say, it's at the end of the.
Yeah, but, but I have, I have a problem with somebody coming up and asking us a question, and I'm giving you my personal opinion.
It goes into a full debate.
I just say, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I just think it's almost.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
But we can't, we can't have a debate about it.
Not a debate about it, that's all. Answer them quick, to the point.
And like I said, if a certain council person, and I just brought up just a scenario between Mo and myself, or Councilman Baydun, excuse me, and I know he has the correct answer, okay, because we've even talked about it, let that person give that correct answer, he could say, Council Chair, I believe I have the correct answer for that.
Yeah.
And it's a quick, 20-second thing, and be done with it.
And then just say, we'll go to a further discussion on item 7A.
Mariana, yes.
Council chair, uh, I just wanted to read page, um, slide thirteen of the training that you all went through, it says, if a question from a public may be answered, simply go ahead. Council is under no obligation to respond to questions during public comment, resist debate during public comment, proceeding officer may state your comments are noted. You could also answer those questions when you go into debate, rather than right at the point of the question.
Good point. And that's exactly what the point that I'm trying to make, especially on agenda items, you know, when they come, this is all about when they first come up.
So what she read also said is that we're not obligated, doesn't mean that we're restrained from doing so.
So remember, back to what I said, there's no rule or law that says we have to follow a certain way, except our own personal rules of order that we.
If we.
When I say we, for last, since sixty-three, have been put together and added and subtracted.
Yeah, and 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 I beg your forgiveness, sir, uh, council chair, that, you know, I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, and and they were an hour, hour and a half, then two hours, two and a half hours, three, four, and some, we've even had five and a half hour meetings. And we're we're doing, you know, our, our job is to do the the business of the city, and we should be able to get through the business of the city very quickly, okay? If we all do our homework, we read our packet clearly, and we we ask the questions or email people and and.
I I don't know.
Council chair?
Uh, you know.
When you get, when you get done. No, go ahead, if you're not done.
And it's, uh, you know, if we ask these questions beforehand, we can get through the city business quite relatively quickly, okay? And then that, and and I'm, the point that I'm trying to get to, and at the end, when it comes time to, for public, you know, when city council members are allowed to speak after, uh, before the, uh, public is is done, for public announcements, you can let the people know that, hey, look, and I've called directors, I've sent emails, I got answers. Uh, thank you for giving me the proper answers to the directors who I called, and do it then, not during a meeting after almost every, every time we mention a, have a motion, hey, I wanna thank this person, I wanna thank that person, and you asked a question. The question should have already been asked and answered before the meeting. That's the proper way of a council person to conduct business.
Right.
And you gotta, and this is city business, I'm not saying for you not to say anything, I'm asking you to get most of these questions answered before the meeting, you may not like that answer, and then you could bring it up and say, I'm trying to get a proper answer, call the person out on it, I'm okay with that part.
Okay, and I wanna add something to that. So a a part of the timeline is you get your packets on Thursday, late afternoon or Thursday evening or whatever. Let's say you go over, or you don't get a chance to go over, it's the very minimal, you start going over on Friday, Saturday, whatever works for you, okay? You're gonna have discussions, possibly calling the council chair to ask a question, possibly calling maybe another council member to ask a question, or whatever questions you have, jot, at least this is a technique I use, jot them down, and call different directors on Monday, not first thing Monday, because they're just coming in, trying to get settled in. But I usually call, I tend to call Monday afternoons most of the time, give them a chance to get settled in for the day. You call them, and if you think it's something, after they give you the answer, you know what? I asked them about, you know, uh, I don't know, how do they move cars, they had been abandoned for five days, I called the police chief and he told me, and this is something that's on our agenda hypothetically. Then say, you know, I spoke with the police chief on Monday, and this is what he told me, and I just felt that I should say this, so all the different council members can know this. This way, none of, no other ones will have that same question to be brought up again. But what Councilman Muscat is talking about is, don't ask the director that question right there and then and go into a discussion, when that discussion should be had on a Monday sometime, uh, on a phone call with that particular director, and if you feel something important that all of us should know, maybe send it out in an email, have him just reply back to all of us, as long as we're not making that decision in that email, or call the different council members, two of them at a time, and let them know what you found out. Okay? Thank you, councilman, yes, go ahead, council.
Yeah, and then all of this, it's, it, let's have our meetings where we're conducting the business, and not, in the past, some people have, like, they'll take one current claim, and they'll, they'll use it to to make an attack. That that needs to be legitimate debate, but to you, to try to, you know, there's, in every city, there's the A group and the B group, to try to, you know, make it into an attack or surprise, that's, that's, let's stress all to just conduct the the business of, you know, the the council.
Yep. Okay, couple other items.
Council chair?
Yes, go ahead.
For clarification, we were talking about public comments, right? And we were talking about public comments on agenda items?
Correct.
We didn't get to the the second one yet?
No, no, no. Okay, so a couple other items, just, uh, little laundry items. Direct all comments and questions through the council chair. The reason that rule's in place for Robert's Rules of Order is not so that the person that's chairing any meeting, for that matter, throughout the United States, it's not because that person becomes a dictator, and I definitely, for one, don't wanna be that type of a person, obviously. The purpose of going through the council chair so you can keep some sort of order. So I'm gonna give you guys examples of of areas where we've broken that rule. So Councilman Ray Muscat makes whatever particular comment, you'll have, and I'm just using as an example, Councilman Constant, let's say, will fly back with, no, that's not right, because we X, Y, and Z. Don't do that. Wait until Councilman Muscat is done with whatever it is that he is speaking, and then Councilman Constant, for example, can say, council chair, I will call on him, go ahead, councilman, then he can address whatever he wants to address, but do not answer the other fellow council members directly. Because what that will do is, that will create a situation of total chaos during the meeting, and everybody's just arguing at each other, not to mention, because we're on Zoom, and not to mention members of the audience, if we're all speaking at the same time, there is no order, and all that is gonna create is, um, inefficient and, um, street-style meeting, and that's not, that's not a good style. Any comments on that? The other one is.
Council chair?
Is for the directors, I'm just gonna say this one quickly.
Go ahead.
And me and Madam Clerk have spoken about this, and the administration, I'm gonna continue, as much as I can, discouraging addition of last-minute items onto the agenda unless it's an absolute emergency. And the reason they discourage that, everything's gotta be turned in, if I'm not mistaken, by twelve o'clock, uh, Tuesday, correct?
Correct.
So everything has gotta be turned in to the Madam Clerk by twelve o'clock Tuesday, by the administration, the mayor's office, directors, et cetera. The reason for that is, so that they can put the packet together, they go over it, they give it to myself, this is how the order goes, they send it to me, uh, as a council chair, by Wednesday morning typically, and they say, council chair, can you approve that particular agenda? We add or subtract if we had to, but then we're done. Now they go through a lot of paperwork, a lot of time, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, putting the packet together, okay? And then they send it over to all of us. But then a director, or somebody from administration, or a council member, or Dave Abdallah, or anybody decides to add one more item on the agenda. Well, some council members, let's say Councilman Wenzel's already gone through his packet, done everything he needs to get, and then we have something that's being added on Tuesday, we have our meeting at six P M., and on Tuesday at five fifteen, I'm sending, because it was an emergency, you know, a thirty-page packet to all of us. That's not fair.
No.
Because one of the council members may be on their way to here, they may be grabbing a quick dinner before the meeting, so please, 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 for everybody that's hearing this, no last-minute items unless it's an absolute emergency. And this is where I take my, from I call given powers, and I look at and see, and they have to prove to me that it is absolutely an emergency and time-sensitive. If you've noticed, you guys, actually, you guys wouldn't know, because only me and the clerk deal with this, there's a lot of stuff that I turn down, and I say, I'm sorry, but no, we can't add that on, that's gonna have to wait until two weeks later, okay?
Council chair?
Go ahead, councilman.
Yeah, and in that regard, we we gotta remember, we really should never, someone will say at the end of the meeting, oh, by the way, we should, uh, enact a motion to get rid of this, the the mayor's office or something, and, you know, we can't add stuff to the agenda like that and then vote on it.
Absolutely, absolutely, and and because nobody gets an opportunity to be able to read it sometimes, you know, you know, we all have, of course, jobs, we all have other commitments in our lives, so get something at five o'clock or three thirty, for that matter, on Tuesday is absolutely just not acceptable. Uh, Chief of Staff, you stole this from me, I had it circled right here, Rules of Public Comment, that was something that, so, that was something else I felt was important, so thank you. Okay, couple other items, I also read all the Rules of Order again, and I'd read them a while back in the past, so I'm gonna do three of them just quickly. Um, this one is important, because I think ourselves, sometimes residents, and sometimes people on Zoom, et cetera, et cetera, is is getting away from that. And as I've said many, many times in past meetings, I will let anybody speak as long as they stay respectful. There's no need to yell, no need to scream, no need to name-call, no need to say private information about either council members or vice versa about residents. The decorum's gotta stay there, you gotta preserve order. If you feel you have something that you feel is inappropriate, that you feel you wanna say to the council members, it is within your right as a resident, but ideally, call that council person, or if you'd like, I'll even sit in on it if you feel you have to, if that council member's okay with it. But let's try to keep it respectful, no need to yell or scream, and this goes both ways, for council members and for residents, please. Um, next one, if a council, these were notes, after I read all this packet that they sent us, these were notes that I thought was very important. A council man or woman, once recognized, shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the chair, unless a point of order is raised by another member, or unless the speaker chooses to yield questions from another member. If a councilman or woman is called to order while he is speaking, he or she shall remain silent or shall alter his or her remarks so as to comply with the rules of the council. If ruled to be in order, he or she shall be permitted to proceed. So basically, what that means is, when certain, and and all of us are guilty of this, including myself, when certain council members are speaking, as long as they, obviously, they're following decorum and trying to stay respectful, allow the person, man or woman, to continue with whatever it is that they're speaking. If you disagree with their comment, that's okay, there's nothing wrong with disagreeing, but allow them to finish their thoughts. Um, we've all been guilty of this, myself included, and I'm gonna be personally conscious of trying to stop that from happening on myself.
Council chair?
Yes, go ahead.
And in that regard, if we can go over quickly or know your thoughts on, so i- i- in, a question comes up involving the mayor, asking the mayor, the mayor and or corporation council, but mainly the mayor, so, you know, somebody says, gets up and says, you know, there's been, there's a terrible crime such and such at such and such time, and, you know, wh- wh- what are your thoughts on just having the mayor speak or not speak? In all the past, people have said, it's our meeting, the mayor doesn't even need to be there, what, I I wanna hear.
I'll tell you my opinion on this.
If the mayor's got something to say.
Sure, I'll tell you my, my opinion on this. So, per the charter and per the Rules of Order, it is our meeting, that's a fact. That basically means that us as a council body, we run the meeting, but just because we run the meeting, doesn't mean we wanna hear the angle of one of the three bodies. Now, obviously, the, uh, judicial branch, we don't use it here in our city directly, so at the end of the day, it's administrative and legislative, right?
Right.
The executive branch, which is, you know, the mayor's office and the directors, and then us, the legislative. I absolutely wanna hear what a mayor has to say about some particular item, or maybe another council member wants to hear, because this is the person that's in charge, head of the operation, and dealing with City Hall on a day-to-day basis. So, the thought process in the past was, no, I don't wanna hear from the mayor, this is our meeting. I think it's absolutely ridiculous and almost childlike, to be honest with you. That doesn't necessarily mean the mayor's gonna run the meeting, no, the meeting's run by the council, but we should have, A, a right to, and B, I'm totally okay with asking the mayor of how he feels about something. Now, there are certain cases where, for example, one of the residents came and was asking, actually, it's not a resident, but without getting into the details, was asking a question in regards to an investigation, as far as what is the status on that.
Right.
And on that, no, I right, right away recognize that that's not to be spoken of, and then our corporation council will typically point it out to us, and I said at the time, if the chief would like to speak on that, then that's up to him and the corporation council, but we're not gonna comment on that, and I stopped all of us from commenting on it. Now, obviously, some of us knew something about it, but it's not for us to, to.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that, so, so we're talking, and then the mayor wants to mention or say that, you know, I was just at, uh, in Lansing, in A, B, or C, or whatever, so.
Absolutely, I I personally wanna hear from him.
Yeah, but, so he'll, he'll just get your attention, or he'll?
Yeah, it usually does, but I can tell you this, uh, in my experience with both of the, you know, last two or three mayors, for that matter, i- in general, it's not been a problem. At one point, there was an attempt to stop a mayor from speaking at a council meeting, and I am totally against that. I, one thing I'm big on is freedom of speech.
Council chair?
Go ahead, council.
Uh, and and noting all of that, uh, we should all, we also had a rule, and I don't know if it's, we're gonna keep it in effect or not, just to bring it up, that unless someone from the council members ask you to let a mayor, or a chief of staff, or another person of, uh, the administration to answer a question, they should not have the right just to talk.
That's a good point, thank you, councilman.
And and even when we are discussing a, uh, agenda item, we can't have someone from the, from the administration raise their hand and say, I wanna talk about it, no. So only if we ask them to.
In that case, it's at the discretion of the council body.
Correct, and I mean, if 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 we ask them a question, uh, through you, then I think they they should be allowed, but they just arbitrarily can't raise their hand and say, I wanna discuss this.
Or, for that matter, just, uh, make a comment on every item.
Yeah, because it it's, it's still our meeting, okay? So, uh, and unfortunately, we have one or two people that do that all the time, that wanna constantly, a- and and a lot of it is not even their department.
Right.
It's not even their department they're they're speaking, okay? So, uh, that much, you know, uh, I don't know if we wanna write that down as a bulletin point.
Well, I mean, that, at the end of the day, it's gonna be, and and sometimes we're just not calling on on certain directors unless a particular, uh, council member had asked a question. Um, any other items of issue concerned in in Madam Clerk and administration, I I don't mind, you guys also giving us your input, uh, I I value your opinion. No, no, I'm talking about right now, if there is something that you think can be done to make our meetings better, more efficient, better decorum, please comment, this is, this, this meeting is, uh, free-for-all, all of us are gonna comment, whatever we feel.
I I, well, I will tell you my opinion.
Yes, please.
The meetings have been long.
Right.
And 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 I know we want to give the chance for everybody to to have, to, for, to be heard.
Correct.
Um, I agree with, uh, Council Pro Tem that it's up to you, if you call on a department head to answer that question.
Correct.
So we'll just ignore them if they, and that's what I think we, if they have their hands up, it's up to you to call them. Um, hold on one second, I gotta make somebody. Uh, the other part, thank you for addressing about the the late, late submissions, I wanna thank the mayor's office, they do, they are getting the most of it, it's just those late submissions, they're, they're, they're on top of it at twelve o'clock on Tuesdays, we haven't had any problems with that.
Correct.
It's just those last-minute changes or whatever, so I think it has to be thoroughly thought about what they are presented.
Correct.
And the timeframe, so thank you for addressing that.
Anything Dana, on your end?
I'm trying to think of, I I agree with, um, can I get to the public comment part?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, that one, I'm gonna address it like as a whole.
Okay, then I won't do that, and there was something else about asking if somebody has to leave, that is addressed in policy, so thank you for bringing that up too, if, yeah, sure. And so that we know too, because that has to be noted in the minutes.
Right.
If they're commenting, but. We're taking a roll call vote, yeah. Um, and. Is there anything else?
Okay, if you think of something else.
We were just talking about, yes.
Just get my attention, uh, Chief of Staff, anything else that's of concern, do the administration.
You know what?
About, about.
While she's walking up here, I'm just gonna continue, okay?
Okay.
Um, I don't know, I, it, and I'm gonna tell you, we're drained on Wednesday.
Yes.
It's, it's the bickering, in in in, I think it needs to be, I think it needs to be a much more professional, um, meeting, right?
Thank you, that was number.
Is that what you're gonna do too?
Number four on my list.
I mean, that is, we're drained.
And basically, how that's avoided is just avoid personal attacks.
Yes, and they have to get in there, I mean.
Make your comment, disagree with the council member, it's okay, just don't make it a personal attack.
It's just, I don't know how to stop that, if we, to the the audience, the gavel, I I don't know, I mean, but it's unnecessary. I mean, you know that I was on the school board for fifteen years, and we try to put those mechanisms in place so that people can discuss and communicate.
Right.
And we need to work on it as adults.
Basically, when speaking, it should be a discussion, not a shaming.
Yes, absolutely, on all parties' parts, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, council, uh, chair and clerk senior, uh, that was one of my items as well, so the way that the training explained it to us, it's all type of comment, whether it's positive or negative, it kind of leads to disarray, so no clapping, no booing, no attacks, no blasphemy, um, et cetera, et cetera. So I do think that it is important for all of you to be responsible for that, and be accountable for each other. Um, because I know we we all get excited about certain topics, but I did ask, who gets to call that, if, for example, the council chair is distracted paying attention to the speaker, any council member can call a point of order, and when a point of order is called, you should all pay attention to it and stop. So that would be my recommendation. Um, I do think that, um, you have to be careful when you do call the directors, if a council member does have a question, absolutely, you can go ahead and direct it to the directors. However, when it is off-topic and not on the agenda item, I do not think it's appropriate to call on the directors, so you could just take a note, call them the next morning, give the phone number to the resident that's asking that question, and move on. Um, oftentimes, they don't have their notes or programs in front of them to know how to answer that question in the first place, so I just wanna point that out.
And keep in mind, I'd like to add something on that, Mariana, I'm sure you'd agree with me, we don't, as council members, set policy for the directors, keep in mind that they are at the discretion of the mayor. So you cannot call a director, and we've addressed that in the past, I'm not gonna say specific names, but where, uh, council members will call directors and say, from now on, I want things done this way, you know, in this department, or, or from now on, don't do that anymore in this department. They are not at our discretion, they they work with us, but for the mayor, so keep that in mind.
Um, another one that I don't see in our, um, in our policies or our charter, is the use of signs, placards, banners, um, they're not so common in in-person meetings, but they are rather common in Zoom meetings, they should not be allowed, in my opinion, just a thought.
Thirty seconds, sixty seconds, stop.
No, she's talking about where somebody makes a, some sort of statement.
Like backgrounds, yeah.
You guys have seen it before, when.
Like, uh, I don't.
They have different pictures behind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, that shouldn't be allowed.
No, we don't have a policy on it.
What, like a back, like if I zoom my background with my boat, you don't want that?
No, no, remember once your back, your face was a background on someone else's on Zoom?
Oh, yeah, just like, we we've had that before, where somebody would put their picture, or somebody else's picture up there.
Or a meme saying something mean, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I would not allow that, period.
But we also have to be careful, I mean, I'm no attorney, but, you know, constitutional, and do you, I don't think you could.
Well, that's where we ask the constitutional right.
Yeah, that fortunately is rarely happened.
I think people that come, that that visit either here in this, uh, excuse me again, council chair, that come here, and people that are on Zoom should also act professionally, okay? We've had that before, where where people have put, and I'm gonna just come out and say it, we had a gentleman that that's continuously whining the city and accusing the city of doing things, and then. And then he does it to antagonize us. He had my picture up there also and doing things of that nature, or somebody else's picture, uh, on there, just to antagonize that person and try to get a reaction from them. If they don't want us to do that and act professionally, then I believe that they should also. Uh, but I don't, like Councilman Baydun just said, how do we, you know, uh, we got to be careful on infringing on their rights. You just can't cut them off.
So there's a group called the accountability, and I believe there was something with a court case and they came in and they had like a background.
The ones that went to the funeral? The ones that would go to funerals?
No, no, they would, they should, they would show up to court. And they would say things about, you know, because at the end of the day, you know, once you become an elected official, you're open to.
You're not kidding.
And, you know, there's no such thing as slander anymore. It's your, you've ran, you've opened that and, um, and, and I think it's just more of comments, I think, is, or like, and I, we just said, I don't know. I'm not an attorney, but I just remember seeing something on YouTube and the accountability.
Fortunately, I haven't gone to. We haven't had no major issues, fortunately.
Which I agree with you though. I, I don't want it at all.
There are other cities that have it, so again, we could certainly get legal counsel on it. Uh, but it's a simple signs, placards, banners, or similar items would not be allowed. Um, we're not infringing on their speaking rights. It's just a matter of respect and what they're displaying.
Right.
Um, all right, sorry, I got distracted. Um, I do want to bring up one item that we discussed during the training that I think it's very important for all of us to try to utilize, which is the, um, voting to go in a closed session prior to a meeting or after a meeting on a specific date, um, rather than having to always try to coordinate it afterwards, because sometimes we might forget. So I just wanted to remind everybody that that is an option. So in a meeting, you can say, at the end of it, I vote that on the following Tuesday, we're going to go in a closed session at five o'clock before the public meeting, et cetera. That way, we don't keep the clerk and everybody else waiting for that period.
I like that idea. So what Coco mentioned there, just to give you guys the layman's term, so you know how like we have to do a special meeting? So we have to do the pledge allegiance, we have to follow all the different, uh, rules of a meeting first before going to a closed session? Well, meanwhile, while we're in a closed session, the clerk's office is just waiting for us, whether it's half an hour or an hour to finish our closed session. So what she referenced is, it is allowed per Robert's Rules of Order to say, um, like, let's say today was a regular council meeting. Let's, let's say today, well, no, today we couldn't do it. It had to be a regular council meeting. We'd say like, for example, let's say 14 days later, on X, Y, Z date, we're going to go into a closed session in regards to labor relations hypothetically, right? And now we've made an announcement, it's official, so that we could start the meeting instead of the six o'clock regular meeting, we can start a closed session at 5:00 PM in regards to labor relations. Thank you.
Yes. Um, and then the other ones I have are just a little bit of housekeeping and administrative things. Um, I've noticed that a lot of our policies and procedures do not have page numbers, logos, or adoption dates. Um, that's very confusing for new people that are coming in and they don't know which policy is the current one, because there are multiple ones in the city. Um, so definitely putting those out there will be very helpful for the residents as well as us. Um, once it does get approved, hopefully reviewed by the, um, council members, the lawyer, I would also advise that you make the items searchable, so you can turn all PDFs into searchable items so that it can ease, um, our efforts in searching for things.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Mariana. Councilman, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. Um, regarding keeping our council meetings businesslike, um, we have sometimes asked the city attorney, you know, is this, can we do this or can we not? And he'll state an opinion. And without going into detail, sometimes it's, it's, you know, it, it, it's not correct. And the, the, the point is, the council chair runs the meeting. The council chair is the final say as far as parliament procedure.
Correct.
We're going to have a new city attorney, so that's probably not going to be an issue because, but, um, and then, of course, no politics, no political announcements, and then as, as much as we can, and I say this in my office all the time, everything digital. No, I got, I got so much paper everywhere that everything, you know, in, in, in receiving it, everything in digital form.
Okay.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Can we also, I mean, I, I don't know. I know that, like you guys said, these meetings have gotten a lot longer. Um, and I, and I know nobody wants to be in here for four or five, like Council Pro Tem said, six, seven hours. Um, can we maybe, you know, minimize the amount of items that we have? So instead of having thirty, we can, we can have twenty?
So one of the items.
Can we put maybe like a goal? Like I know there's, you know, a lot of, you know, professionals will do goals, like, hey, today's goal is, we're only going to spend an hour and a half to this entire meeting. Maybe you could set that goal amongst all of us. Guys, let's knock this out by an hour and a half.
That's a great idea.
And you know, I think, I think we did that one time. We did it one time, and I think we did it, it was for like, we were, I think we were fascinated, like, let's try to get this out of here in two hours. And we're out of here in two hours.
Right. Okay, but there's only one issue that comes up a lot, and my opinion is, and will always be, is giving the residents the opportunity to be able to speak. I am not for minimizing the resident, and I'm not saying that's what you're saying.
No, that's, no, I'm saying, but it's, a lot of it comes back to us.
So the number of agenda items, the, the one, the one thing on the agenda is, uh, the claims. And the claims were added way back when, uh, I'm not going to name the council member's name, but.
I remember.
She, no, it was way before you.
I know, I remember.
Yeah.
She requested because they felt those things being happening in the back end.
Exactly.
I went back to watch a lot of it.
I feel, I feel like, honestly, and I spoke with, uh, Chief of Staff about this. I feel personally, uh, current claims, I, I don't think are absolute, the only ones that should be put on there are the ones that are absolutely needed. Otherwise, I've never felt, honestly, they, they should be on there.
And I go through them on every meeting.
Council Chair, you know, what's interesting is current claims are things that are already paid for.
I know.
And, and, and we're, we're already, we're already approving something that's already been paid for.
No, not paid, approved to be paid.
Approved, yeah, approved to be paid, but they're already paid for, I think. Some of, no, they're not, they're not paid. So, but it, it, there is a $1,500 limit, and we should at least know about these things. And, and I go back to what I wanted to state before. If the current claims come before us and we read them all, if there's something on there that you object to, this is where you send the email or you pick up the phone. If you don't get that clear-cut decisive answer, then you bring it up. This will shorten our council meetings by an hour and a half. The questions that we ask are sometimes so redundant, it, it's unbelievable, okay? And, and we have to say, well, why is this and why is that, why is? Those are questions that should have been already cleared up. Uh, you know, I look at Chief Brogan's thing, okay? It's the fire department. Well, he definitely can't work without medical supplies, okay? Uh, they can't work without a fire engine, okay? Uh, DPW can't, uh, go out and cut a tree down without a chainsaw, okay? So, uh, you know, these are things that you look at, okay? And, and nine times out of 10, we all vote yes on, on accepting those six through 24, six through 90, whatever. We all vote yes on them, okay? But there might be that one that you don't like and that shouldn't be paid for, okay? And that's okay. That's okay. That should be, always be done, because that's what you're being officially responsible for. So I think they should still stay on, six, one, the, the current claims. But we don't have to go, go crazy on those things, we do. Uh, I like to send my emails on Sunday. Monday afternoon, I'm getting answers back from everybody. And sometimes I get phone calls from, uh, the DPW director, I'm getting it from the city engineer. I'm getting the answers from, uh, Mr. Hart and, and, and Mr. Brogan, uh, uh, you know. So I'm already getting those answers. I don't need to bring them up anymore.
Okay.
So let's try to do that. We can, we can knock off an hour right there.
Okay. Um, I'm going to go ahead, give us a little bit of a break, and we're going to go ahead and go to Zoom. So we're going to bring in Vince here, uh, one of the residents has a comment. Vince, can you unmute, please?
How's that?
Yep, we can hear you.
Um, I was wondering if Coco and I had brought this up with Councilman, uh, Musket, because I spoke to him earlier today. Did Coco mention anything about your position as being a tiebreaker and not voting on any of the agenda items? That you're supposed to be a tiebreaker?
I, I, it's cutting off, what was that?
He, he wants, he talked to me earlier. He says he doesn't know if you should be voting or not, you should be the tiebreaker, but according to the rules are.
Charter, I have to vote, yeah, I have to vote.
Unless it's, unless it's.
Part of the charter.
Unless he has something to do, like, say, he's involved in a business that we're voting on.
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest. That's when he could say, I, I, I need to back off. Uh, I think there's a few of us that have done that in the past, and, but council chair still has to vote. And anyone who does not say yes or nay, actually, the vote would be yes. Way it goes down is a yes vote if you don't say something, okay? And, and I believe that, you know, myself, and, and I think other people would want to know exactly how his feelings are for every item.
Yes, I agree with you on that.
Okay, because he could, you know, if that, that's the case, we could all sit back, so I don't want to offend nobody, so I'm not going to vote. No, you got to have, you got to vote. So, yes, Vince, he does have to vote. I did clear that up with the clerk.
Correct.
And, uh, and a parliamentarian.
Yep. Any other council member?
Council Chair, are we going to be using support or?
Okay, go ahead, no, no.
Are we going to be using support or second?
It's supposed to be second.
Seconded.
Seconded. If we say support, does that mean it's like you're not going to accept it?
She's, again, per Robert's Rules of Order, and by the way, Robert's Rules of Order, I mean, the booklet is like this thick.
Yep.
Okay? So if you're, if you, you know, start using my tone and you want to read that, you'll be knocked out in seconds.
You need a Cliff Notes, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but what you can do, look, e- even if you don't go through the whole book, I mean, I, I did a lot of this. I mean, this is one of them, for example. Um, I printed a lot of this, I, I do it like almost on a regular basis, but, you know, Robert's Rules of Order cheat sheets, you print them online. There's all kinds of stuff, because it's, Robert's Rules of Order goes into deep, deep, deep stuff that maybe is on a congressional level. I don't think necessarily we need to hear at a council member, uh, level. But do read that, so we, we make sure. And, and, and for a lot of council members, we all got to be careful of not speaking to speak. Let's not speak just to speak. You don't have to comment on every single item. None of us do, okay? So if you don't feel you need to comment, don't. Uh, the other thing is announcements. You know, I'm giving you my personal opinion. You know, i- if it's something you want to just get to the audience, maybe put it on Facebook or put it whatever, one of the social medias. We don't need to make a lot of announcements. And if you do feel you want to make announcements, that's fine, at the end of the meeting. Let's keep those to the minimal and as quick as possible, because sometimes what's happening, if every council member is making three to four to five minutes of announcements, that right there, times seven, I mean, you're talking about, you know, 40 minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Not that it's necessarily taking 40 minutes, but let's keep those to the minimal as much as we can. Anything else, uh?
One more item from you, if you don't mind. Uh, we go back to the, I don't know if this is a Robert's Rule or, 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 I believe Coco said, it's not, uh, legal for us to make a motion and then talk negatively about that said motion. So if there's something in a motion that you don't like, something on the agenda that you don't like, don't make the motion. Let somebody else make the motion, okay? And you still can make the motion, but not talk negatively toward it and still be able to vote no.
You can vote no.
Okay, so let's remember that. Uh, so if there's something that you want to speak negatively of, don't make the motion and let somebody else make it, okay? So we can go about that. And according to what we learned about the closed sessions, we're allowed to have closed sessions on the, on the off week that we have.
Yeah.
So this thing that we have to have it on a, 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 a meeting day. So, yeah, but I'm just saying now, uh, on, if we, if they, they know what they're coming up, the administrational, that we got to have something, we can do it on a day like today.
And that's what I've been doing.
Okay, so, I mean, we were steered the wrong way, because I remember, uh, throughout the years, I would show up here at City Hall and say, I know, it's, we're at a closed meeting today. I couldn't come in, so I just turned around and went home.
Yeah, and, and that's why, that's why I changed it, if you remember, when I became the council chair, because I felt.
And we were still, but we were still doing it. We, I mean, we were having council meet, we'd start here at six o'clock, then we'd get up, we'd go into the room there.
Right.
We already knew that was going to be a closed session coming up. We should have had it the week before, the week, or the, the following.
On the off weeks, that's what I've been doing.
Correct.
Council Chair?
Okay, Councilman Wenzel.
Okay, um, a few months ago, there, uh, there was a situation I thought that was very important to me and the safety of myself and fellow council members. And I brought it up to the police chief, I visited with him, and, uh, I asked that if we could have a police presence at the city council meetings. And he told me I'd have to get approval from the mayor or the council chair. And, uh, so I emailed, uh, mayor, council chair, I believe the rest of the council. And the council chair responded, uh, he said he didn't feel that there was a just cause or not enough of a threat to warrant police protection. Now, um, someone else was determining if I was threatened enough or not on that situation. And, uh, no, and, and I threatened that I wouldn't attend a meeting without it, but I came anyway. And a few meetings back, I was getting harassed by several members of the audience, and there was a police officer here. And, uh, I asked how he'd be removed, and it wasn't, he wasn't removed, and he continued. And then the threat of removal, uh, quieted him down. So a couple of meetings ago, after, a couple of meetings after that, um, we had a situation where someone was sitting right in front of me and giving me threatening looks, and if that, if that person continued to hassle me, and the chair told him to stop and he wouldn't stop, which one of us council members would go hit, remove him? Which one, would you, which, which council member up here would go remove that person from the audience?
I, I didn't understand a que, sorry, sorry. I, I need to understand a question.
I'm saying, if there's someone who are harassing me, just by coincidence, there was an officer at that one meeting. But, uh, our next meeting, if someone does it again, which one of us is going to go remove that guy from the audience?
Well, that should come from the council chair, but.
Well, who's going to remove him, though?
Oh, I understand what you're saying. It should be a police officer.
Should we gang up on him?
I think we should, uh, we don't have a sergeant-at-arms person.
Okay, well, let me, okay. Um, then let me finish.
But we should, we should have.
On 20, on 50223, Maintenance of Order, number four, it says unauthorized remarks from the audience stamping the feet, whistling, yelling, or similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the council chairman or chairwoman. That person shall direct the sergeant-at-arms to remove such offenders from the room. Right there. So we need, we need a sergeant-at-arms. We've always had a, a police officer, up until last year or two, where they stopped coming for some reason.
Yeah, we should have a police, be, a police officer should be a sergeant-at-arms, because, let's face it, um, you know, we, we, I, not, I, it could be some training here that somebody knows how to handle themselves real well, or somebody has a weapon. But that's a police, policeman's job. It's not our job to be a, uh, like a vigilante or something, and God knows, I know all about that stuff.
Yeah, because I was, I was actually contacted by residents that said that they were, they had, they had the right to, uh, ca, open carry and they would be in the audience for me. You know, and I, I said, no, don't do that, you know, I don't need that, but.
I, I don't know if open carry, I, I, open carry, the laws, you know, you can't do it in hospitals and, and, and I don't think you're be allowed to come in.
I don't think you're actually allowed to open carry.
Yeah, I, I mean.
I don't know about it, yeah, I think.
Mister, Councilman Baydun works for the sheriff's office, and he probably could answer that a little bit better than most of us.
I know where it was challenged, if you recall, at our, uh, in Lansing, if you recall, at the State Capitol. If you remember, was it Year Two Bad?
Yeah, they were all in there.
Yeah. But I'm not an attorney.
But I think, I, I think Councilman Wenzel's, uh, got, uh, has a legitimate beef that we should have a police officer here. And I think, uh, council chair, in my opinion, should request one as a sergeant-at-arms, because if it gets to a point where you do have to remove somebody, that should be a police officer.
So I'll, I'll, I'll give you, let's go ahead, Councilman.
Council Chair, that's okay with you. I, I'm going to agree with him on that, but I'm also going to agree that, God forbid, somebody does walk in here because they're mad at the city because their taxes are high and they just start shooting. What, what am I going to do? I'm going to hide under here. We have, there's nobody here. There's not even a security guard. Um, so you may be, I mean, you know, so, we don't know. God forbid, and it'd be our residents or maybe us.
Council chair, I, I believe the, the clerk, do you have something on that?
There is something in policy.
Yeah, it's a discretion, I read it.
Okay.
So that, that, um, he or she, chair, chairman or woman, he or she shall arrange for the presence of an employee or officer to be present between, to serve a sergeant at arms.
Right, if the council chair decides to do that. Now, one of the things that I've factored in is, and I can't get into the specific conversation, but there's also, let's keep in mind a cost to that. So if you're going to have, uh, a police officer here, we're already short-staffed with police officers, so more than likely it would be an overtime type of situation. You'll have a police officer here paying overtime for every council meeting for two, three, four, or five, whatever it is, hours. In my, in the last just seven years that I've been on the council, there's not been one situation where I've felt so threatened, physically, not me or anybody else, physically. Has some residents every once in a while gotten a little bit out of order? Yes, but whoever is the council chair is to typically put them right back in line. Keep in mind, whether it's here or at my house or anywhere else, when you want a police officer, you dial nine one one. And just like at home, where we could be threatened and somebody can break into our home, we dial nine one one and within minutes, there's a police officer there.
Counsel chair, I, I disagree.
Yeah.
Because I personally had that happen to me and I had to write a police report. Uh, uh, matter of fact, it was our last meeting of December of two thousand sixteen. Uh, there was a personal attack, almost a physical.
Somebody told you to come outside or something, right?
Uh, not only that, they actually tried to come over the table. That's one.
And they called their brother-in-law or something?
And somebody wanted to call their husband, uh, to come up and, and do bodily harm to people. And I also feel for council, Councilman Wenzel because that did happen. And couple of minutes is better of life and death. So if we do have a sergeant at arms and we could have a police officer here, you know, uh, I'm, you know, I'm adamant on having a police officer here personally.
I support you on that.
A- a- and, uh, because at one time, Dave, excuse me, council chair, we even wanted these back doors closed because we couldn't see anybody coming in that way. Okay, and, uh, that's a scary feeling when you have, have people calling you up and threatening or making comments even on social media about stuff like that. It, it's very disturbing. You're trying to, again, we're coming back to the point where we're supposed to be here to do the business of this city. Not to take all these complaints and argue amongst ourselves about this or that. The business of the city. And if we just concentrate on the business of the city, we can be out of here with all the work that's being done and support the people that want to come up and talk in a relatively short time.
I agree.
Okay, so personally, I believe we should have a, a, a police officer. And we're not supposed to be voting here, but a concession I, a consensus I, I'm getting is everybody wants to have a police officer.
I'm personally in disagreement. That's my opinion, my personal opinion. I, I've not seen any type of endangerment to that level.
It, it, but it has happened. I'm just, I'm giving you, I'm giving you incidents of when it did happen.
So what I've, what I've noticed is anytime we ask a resident to basically calm down and keep it down, or maybe a council member, not, I mean, every time I think of it, stop.
That was at the end of a meeting that happened in December of two thousand sixteen.
After meeting, I, I don't know.
Everybody's leaving and that happened. What are you going to do when somebody wants to climb over the table?
So if you guys feel and say you're, a- again, I'm not taking a dictatorship in this thing. But if you guys as a body feel you want to bring a police officer and have him here for two, three, four hours and pay him overtime while they're here for the next four and a half years, because in two thousand sixteen something happened, that's up to you guys. I feel, I, I don't feel it's, it's needed, honestly.
Counsel chair.
Yes, counsel.
And, and I respect that, but look, at the end of the day, we have to make sure as a body that we take the right measures. Right now, nothing may have happened and God willing me, thank God, nothing has happened. But if this one time something does happen,
Yep.
then, then we're all that far. And if somebody one day does put your life on harm or you're in danger or, or anyone else's, look, the councilman was afraid. At the end of the day, uh, you know, if he's afraid, that's, that's how he feels. I can't control it, you can't, nobody else can control that. But if a police officer is here, and I understand you can, and I'm sure Councilman Muske can, but look, at the end of the day, you know, that's not our jobs and, and to be, you know, served and protected by, by our police officers, there's nothing wrong with that. And you know what? Uh, one of the reasons for this meeting is so we don't have four, five, six, seven hour meetings anymore. Conduct business, potentially we can put a goal up and say an hour and a half, we're going to conduct our business that people speak, two hours.
A- a- and council chair, we, we recently had a problem when we were doing the meetings at Riverside Library. Where two people in the audience came in and police had to separate them. We had that problem. And that's, and we haven't heard the end of that yet. Uh, so there's, there's incidents that have happened here in the very near past.
Based on that theory, you'd have a police officer throughout City Hall all day.
And we had a police officer here in City Hall stationed here for the longest time.
Yeah.
Because, because people were getting threatened.
I'm not making it, I, yes, I know the decision at the end of the day is up to me, but I will not make it as a, as an individual. I just feel against it. But if the council as a body wants it, I'll, I'll speak with the chief. I just don't think it's a good idea.
Council chair?
Wait, let's, this council.
First of all, to raise point that you made a good point. Let's not, so on the agenda is a, a, a motion to raise taxes two thousand percent. Most of the time, everything will be silent and then someone will say, well, for discussion purposes, I want to bring this up, but I'm against that. No, you don't, you don't have to bring it up for discussion purposes. And either you make a motion because you want it adopted, or you, you, it, it, it fails for lack of support.
Correct.
Number two, there's a different di- regarding the police being here, there's a different dynamic now because of Zoom. So always the police chief was at the meeting. He had his radio. Okay, it's a little different thing.
He had a weapon with him.
So, so, um.
And I thought about that, of course.
Yeah, as far as any people, so there's, there's the concealed weapons law. The law in Michigan is arguably that anybody, if, if I can have a pistol, even though I don't have a concealed weapons permit, as long as it's open. Nobody better be packing any guns, any, in this, me.
I, I, I get it.
Counsel chair?
Police chief here, if you want to have, ask him what his feelings are.
Please, yep, there he is. Chief Hart, did you want to comment on this?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just got power on in my house, so I apologize. Um, can you give me up the speed on, um, on the discussion at this point? It's my understanding that you're having a discussion or debate about, uh, bringing in, um, uniformed police officers during council meeting, is that correct?
Correct, and, uh, you know, based on sergeant at arms, um, I personally, I'm saying myself personally, I don't feel honestly the need for that or the need to put that type of an expense. Uh, there's a couple of council members that have a concern about that and we're having a discussion about that and this is where you come in. But there was also, uh, a point that was made about whether a resident can come in with an open carry into a council meeting. And I brought up the point of what happened in Lansing a couple of years back, if you recall.
It's different, it's people open, but anyway, go ahead.
Just, you know, bringing it up. So that's where we're at.
So certainly we're, we're at a point, um, in society, right, where there seems to be many significant events that are taking places and, um, and did I break up or?
No, you're fine.
We can hear you.
Okay. Uh, where we're having a lot of, uh, significant horrific events, you know, that are occurring in, in places, over the weekend grocery stores, right? So I can tell you, in one of my previous communities, uh, it has been a longstanding tradition to have at least one uniformed police officer that's been assigned to the council meeting. They have roles that take place uh, prior to the meeting and where they're supposed to be, where council is setting up, leaving their items, preparing for the meeting. It's something that we should probably sit down and, and, and have further discussion on. I have a policy that is written for it. Uh, in anticipation that you may, uh, at, at some point have some robust discussion on it. As far as open carry, I would like to, to have an opportunity to sit down and, and dig into that a little bit further because it is a public building. Uh, there are many rules and kind of like some little niches that are carved out for open carry in certain areas. So we certainly want to make sure that we're not violating anyone's rights, but, um, it's kind of the lawyer answer tonight, but I think what we need to have is, is a little bit more discussion on it and find out exactly what the intent is.
Uh, uh, council chair?
Go ahead.
A- a- and to Chief Hart, my, my big thing is, is if someone in the audience does get unruly, who removes them? I mean, it, we're not trained for none of this stuff. A police officer at least has, has, uh, 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 the ability and the training to be able to handle that situation or, or def- and are trained to diffuse things of that nature, okay? And I believe that's their, their job. Uh, we've had that in the past. Uh, we had, again, I, I'm going to mention two thousand sixteen with, with a councilwoman and myself with someone from the audience. Uh, 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 another incident just happened here at Riverside, not in the past year, okay? Where two, two, uh, people in the audience got into it. Um, a- and again, with Councilman Wenzel, uh, feeling threatened, uh, a- and rightfully so. So I, 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 again, the council chair doesn't believe we need it. I believe we need it. And I think as a, a, as a rule, we should ask ourselves right now, do we want that police person here or not? And I, from my understanding, I think the, the chief of police is ready and, and able to have that happening, am I correct?
Yeah, I have a policy in place and what we need to determine, because you did bring up a, a, a valid point here is who's in charge of the meeting? And that's the council chair, right? If the council chair is not there, then the council chair pro town, which would be yourself. I have to establish with my police officers the understanding that it's the council chair, right, that is in charge of the meeting. And then, uh, they would then have conversation with, try to de-escalate.
How you broke up. Well, hang on.
Hey, hey, chief, after de-escalate, you broke off.
Yeah, we, we would have to sit down with, um, our legal counsel and define what that process looks like. Because as a police officer, I could sit back and say, all right, things are getting a little bit out of control here. Maybe I should interject myself, right? Uh, have a conversation and maybe de-escalate. But you as a body might say, this is just somebody that, um, is expressing themselves and they're very emotional and you may not feel the same way, uh, um, from your seat within the council meeting. So what I'd like to do is sit down and establish those rules, train our police officers, uh, on what their role is uh, if they were called upon to be at a council meeting. And then, uh, make sure that we're, we're living up to that policy and procedure.
But in, but in the meantime, but, but in the meantime, I believe council right now should have their consensus of we want a police officer or not. And if we do, we go ahead into that meeting with, with the police chief, with the council chair and establish rules on how that's going to happen. But we should already be letting everyone know, we want it or we don't want it. I think it should be done here today. I don't think it should be held up any longer and that's how I feel about it, so.
Counsel chair?
I'm, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the council chair to take a consensus on this right now.
Okay, as soon, as soon as the debate is over.
Three things. Number one, sergeant at arms, that's, you run the meeting, we don't, if, if, if somebody's not. Number two, you rarely, I, I don't think in the history of the city can actually physically throw somebody out of the meeting. So you can't say you, if there's a threat or something, then somebody can be arrested. And number three, um, yeah, we, we traditionally, we used to always have two police officers at the meeting. Uh, this was a bigger space, but it's, you know, as far as overtime, there, there are some, there, there was a big trend that people were saying, look, don't have your city attorney at the meeting. It's an extra expense. You don't need it. Then a bunch of Cummings, McClory did that, the, the founders of the MMRMA. They said, but it's stupid. You want to have your city attorney there. It's, it's, same thing with having a police officer there. Not, we're not talking about, nobody's going to get thrown out of a meeting or, or, you know, we're just talking about, you know, somebody there to, to make sure to, you know, restore order to, 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 you know, no, nobody starts throwing stuff or anything. Like, for example, at the city or the Detroit school board meetings.
Okay.
Council chair?
Uh, Councilman Baydun's next and then Councilman Wenzel.
Thank you so much. And so chief, I just wanted to tell you, my input on this was, you know, God forbid, the one day somebody does come in here and, and is angry and, and making threats or potentially even being armed or some type of weapon. Uh, you know, I'm sure Councilman Abdullah can jump right over and start swinging, but I don't know how much he's going to be able to protect the rest of us. Uh, so my, my thing is just to be proactive.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel?
Thank you. Uh, nearly a year ago, at Oxford High School, there was signs of, uh, problems with a student that, uh, several, uh, iss- events took place prior to a tragedy. And they were basically, uh, ignored and, and then a terrible thing happened. So we don't want to be closing the barn door after the horses get out.
Council chair?
Thank you.
If.
Ma'am.
Okay, there's just a couple of things. I know that you said possibly meeting with, um, with, um, the chief, okay? So if you do that, there are several things where it says maintenance, where our Maintenance of Order on how to handle situations that may arise. Okay, so keep in mind that, bring that with you so that we can update those policies if you choose to do that. Also, when it says, um, in our Maintenance of Order, a lot of them say shall. Shall maintain the order. Shall say who is to speak. Shall decide all questions of order. Shall arrange for the presence of an employer officer to be present. Shall preserve order. So it's all positive. Yes, you will do this. And sergeant at arms says shall.
Well, yeah, but, but on that particular one, and I read it, it says, uh, sergeant at arms or employee.
It says presence of an employee or officer. Absolutely right.
And we always have employees.
So it does say shall. So who is going to, and I think that kind of the other council members are saying, who is that employee's going to be? Who is that employee going to be? Who is going to remove them from this if I feel threatened? You know what I mean? Because things have gotten heated here.
If they.
We'll take turns.
Councilman. Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments on this particular issue?
Council chair? I do feel the same way. I don't feel threatened right now, but I, I mean, I feel with Councilman Wenzel, I might be threatened in the future. So I think, uh, a uniformed officer can, um, uh, probably, uh, you know, put, put people in check. Like, you know, still, you know, saying something or, or maybe thinking about threatening somebody, they can put people in check, so I, I would say why not, having a uniformed officer?
That's four people right there. Well, you've got at least four people on a council that want this to happen.
How do you feel about this? We've always, we are.
Woman, woman, woman.
I'm sorry.
I, I'm leaning more with, with David at this point. I, I, I see that people can be subject to removal further barred from the audience if they make statements that are personal important.
No, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is in case something does happen, we do have someone that's trained to be able to handle the situation. I'm not saying go ahead and remove the person, but be trained to be able to either diffuse a situation or to, to protect you if somebody physically wants to attack you. And that's happened. Okay.
Council, council, please, let, let ours. Go ahead, Councilman.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't see it as a necessity at this time. But it could be a problem in the future.
Okay. Councilman Conston and Councilman Ahmad.
Yeah, but let's be clear, we're talking about three different things. Number one, we're talking about like some type of an emergency situation, which thank God hasn't happened. And for, for that, of course you need a police officer. Number two, we're talking about, nobody, there's a very rare occurrence where you can physically throw somebody out of the meeting.
Correct.
You, so we don't, it's not council chair, I'm, I'm sick of so-and-so saying, you know, there, I, we had an issue regarding that when Denise Maxson was chair and who was to enforce. But yeah, at the end of the day, I think we, we should have a officer here. This is, is part of the, in every courtroom downtown, there are two officers. They sit there most of the time, play with their phones, they do some, uh, administrative stuff. But they're there, that's part of the decorum of a, uh, I'm trying to think, city of Dearborn, Dearborn always has its police chief there. Or I think Dearborn always has an officer there.
Um, yeah. Their police chief is there.
Police chief, I believe, is there.
And don't forget, there is a sergeant at arms, okay, that's, that's a- actually carries a weapon at the state legislature also, that's right there on the floor.
What we're talking about is.
Uh, but we still have a sergeant at arms. So that's what we're, what we want. A sergeant at arms and that sergeant at arms, as far as I'm concerned, should be a police officer. Because we say employee of the city, well, is, is Engineer Dibb going to do something? Or is Mariana, she's, she's an employee of the city, have her do it, a sergeant at arms. That's ridiculous.
Triple black belt.
To me, I think people are going to respect the badge and I think our, our chief has something to say.
Go ahead, chief.
You, you were frozen. Do I have the floor?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, chief.
Okay, so I think, I think what we're looking at here is councils really looking at kind of a three-prong approach. First is a visible deterrence by having a uniformed trained police officer within the council chambers. The second would be if things start to get heated up, to use the tools in our training for de-escalation, right? Because I'm with all of you, the, the absolute worst thing we can do is have to remove someone, uh, from one of our council meetings, right? Uh, and then finally would be to have a trained police officer there armed that would be able to respond to, uh, a critical incident of, um, someone that decides to try to harm city council or someone within the, within the council chambers. Is that kind of?
Absolutely.
What we have that raw discussion on right now?
Absolutely. And Chief, it seems like, you know, I'm in disagreement, you know, as you know, I'm very blunt with my feelings. I'm in disagreement. I don't think we need that type of a cost for a full meeting on a regular basis. But I also respect the consensus of the council as a body. And I like to vote or go in a direction of what most of us feel. So most of us or most of them feel they'd like to have a police officer present. So if you don't mind, if you could at least start looking into that and get back with me and we'll go ahead and see which direction we go from there.
Council Chair, I have a question for Chief Hart.
What?
Chief Hart, a few meetings back, there was a police officer here. Under whose direction was he here?
I, you will have to refresh.
Refresh your internet. Wait, you cut off. You said you have to refresh and it cut off.
Ah, yeah. To refresh my memory on what meeting that.
I believe it was the golf course one, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Yeah. Generally, if I get a sense that there are going to be some heated discussions there, then I will proactively put somebody at those meetings.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other council members have any comments about anything? Because we're going to go to public comments discussion next. Is there anything else?
Council Chair?
Yes.
Well, just so we're clear, again, you know, if there's an incident, there's a police officer, whose, whose direction he's under, that's kind of like begging the question. And then people brought up the issues at the Capitol. The issue at the Capitol was if that you can't ban in a public place, certain kind of guns. And then there were all these shootings and there's these gun extremists, let's call them, up in the gallery with these big automatic weapons. But it's, that's a whole different, different scenario. The current Attorney General wanted to ban those, those show these, you know, automatic weapons and stuff in the Capitol building. And the, there's a body in the legislature that makes the rules and they eventually passed that and did that.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and address public comments next on.
Council Chair, I have one, one issue.
Yes, glad.
Thank you. And 50123, number, number seven. I recently talked to, or emailed and had communications with one of the directors to get some information from their department. And I was, and they emailed me back and they told me that I have to go through the mayor's office. And then I emailed them back and I said under the city chair section 18.2, you know, the council should have collectively or individually the authority to inspect at any reasonable hour, any or all documents, books, documents or papers of any elected or appointed official or any office or department of the city.
Correct.
Okay. And I was told I had to go through the mayor's office.
You talking about a particular director?
Yes.
Okay. I, I don't know. Did you speak with the mayor about it or did you speak with the administration about it?
I didn't. But I mean, is that something we have to go through the mayor's office? I mean, I mean, I don't mind going through there, but is that something that?
Based on the, based on the council rules, and I've read that particular one, a council member does have a right to go through those types of documents, provided obviously that they're not looking at personal information, of course. So they won't have access to that. But generally, yes, they can.
Okay, thank you. I mean, so what, I mean, I will have to get ahold of Mariana and, you know, I'll talk to you recently after the meeting I'm talking about. And, but yeah, I was, I was just concerned that that's something we have, if we have to do that every time.
No, in general, again, in general, any director or administrator has got to give you access to that. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, we're going to go to public comments next. So in general, on public comments, just to give you guys a little bit of an update as far as how the general council rules are, residents can come up up to three minutes, they can have up to three minutes on public comments and speak to anything pertaining to the city. But technically, they can come up and talk about anything they want. Ideally, we'd like for them to come in and speak about city matters. There are cases where somebody comes up and this is the first time they've ever come up and they've not approached, any department had, like, let's just say they have a, I don't know, bad dog two doors down that keeps barking 24/7. And I'm using that as an example. And they've come to the council meetings and during public comments, they want to comment on public comments and talk to three minutes about that dog that's barking. Did I say that? We have an alarm with a dog bark going off. So, yeah, we're getting full 3D effect here. So we have a dog barking. Okay. Usually we tell that resident, although they have a right to speak during a public comment, we let them know it's best to start with ordinance and only if you've gone nowhere with ordinance, maybe come back and speak to the council members. But technically, they do have a right to speak about anything they want during the public comments section. Now, I do know Madam Clerk had some concerns about public comments. I'm going to let her go ahead and speak on that and then we'll go with Chief of Staff.
Okay. It was just what's currently in there and you were talking about conversing. And in here, it allows you to converse with them.
Correct. During public comments, yes, council members can go, can discuss.
And then he or she shall have up to three minutes to address the council unless the council, any member of the council, all city elected.
Then the clock stops.
Yes.
Correct.
You can converse if you want to, but you don't.
Are we talking about?
Correct. Public comments. During public comments.
According to Coco, she said the clock should continue to run no matter what.
I disagree.
I'm just saying what she said. So, so when I'm taking the time, I stop it when we discuss with them.
So if a resident comes up and they want to have a public comment about ordinance X, Y, or Z, and they start speaking and after 20 seconds into it, they say, you know, Councilman Ray Muscat, you know, how do you feel about this particular dog ordinance? And you give us, let's say, a one-minute, you know, intervention about how you feel about the dog ordinance. Now that particular resident only has about a minute left. That's not fair.
Correct. And I just want to clear that.
Yeah. So with respect to Coco, I disagree with her.
Okay. I, I, that's our rule. We can.
We'll keep it as is. Correct. Chief of Staff?
Hi. So with regards to the item seven, sorry, 50123 seven, that Councilman Wenzel was talking about, where it says that the city council shall have collectively or individually the authority to inspect at any reasonable hour, any and all records, books, documents and papers. Yes, absolutely. But there is a difference between inspecting what is in existence and requesting documents and reports that do not exist. That puts a new task on some of our police officers, which is an administrative request that would have to be appointed by the mayor if such task is going to require a lot of time. That is the same reason why we charge for FOIA's, for example, because pulling those documents does require time from our staff. So that would be one of my answers. And the second one would be in certain cases, there are, of course, legal matters that could be potential lawsuits or are current potential lawsuits. So it is a courtesy to let the mayor know what you're looking for. That way, we can assign the appropriate person who is tracking that information or who has the information you're looking for.
Good point. Hassan Jabal, do you have something you want to say about public comments?
That being.
Can you let him on, please?
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Just a general comment. As a city executive team member, administrative and executive team member, just a comment regarding Robert rules. Is the council adopting the Robert rules as a, as a, oh, okay.
Parts of it. Parts of it and parts of it, not. Not everything.
Okay. So you are not adopting Robert rule as a procedure for conducting legislative meeting? Thank you.
We're taking a lot of information from it, but it's, we're not 100% Robert rules board.
I just, I just want to know that. Thank you.
Sure. No problem. Take it, Hassan.
Legislative, legislative matters that the council, as a legislative body under the state of Michigan, is limited to financial oversight over the city operation, meaning interference with administrative policies and procedures can be handled through legislatively oversight, financial oversight. This is one. Number two, every, every document goes on the city council agenda. It is the responsibility of the city council, as a city council, to be available for the public electronically and, and by, you know, as we used to use in the past. But electronically, it is a critical right now for all the documents that being dealt with publicly during the meeting, whatever, it should be available electronically for the public. This is, this is, this is number two concern that I personally, there's a lot of people asking my department questions because it's being put out, you know, on your. Now, if that's maybe difficulties, challenging to do that, that's something the council chair needs to give. Now, and he can assist the council. It's the responsibility of the council, no other, no other, no other department.
Okay. Hassan, we got to move on. We can't keep, this is, this whole meeting is to keep this as short as possible.
I mean, you, it's okay. I mean, if you, if you don't want me to speak and.
No, speak, but we got to keep it as short as possible.
I have no problem. You know, but again, you know, there's a lot of talks about something other than information and it's been allowed. When I'm talking about information, nobody likes to hear it.
We just got it. Hassan, Director, we got to keep it as short as possible, please.
Well, as a, as a teacher for previous lecture at the college, this is part of my way of explaining as much as using the R and R and R. So again, the, you know, in regard to the, you know, current claims, all the, all the current claims that have been approved by the mayor according to the charter, using the mayor privilege to approve it as necessary to be paid between city council meetings, it doesn't have to come to the city council. It doesn't. Because you will receive it later on during the monthly report. Or you can receive it, you know, from the treasury, which is required by the charter for the check register. So maybe, maybe, you know, three quarters of the current claim can be reduced not being brought to you, you know, for council approval.
But, but council chair.
This is under the mayor's privilege.
Council Chair?
By the charter.
But, but Director Hassan, this is a meeting that we've decided to put together for us, the council people, to make the rules. And, and that's what this, this is all about. We want to set up the rules that we all follow. So instead of having a four or five-hour meeting, we have an hour and a half or two-hour meeting. Okay?
Okay.
And, and we, and sometimes, excuse me, and sometimes, as much as I love you, you try to take us to school all the time. And, and, and sometimes you go off-subject. That's not even about CDBG. So I understand. And if there's problems that we're doing, and I'm the first one to admit, that if we, if we're making mistakes, that could be conveyed to us via an email, saying, I think you made a mistake in the way you did procedurally that you did. But we can't have this at every meeting. I'm sorry.
Yeah, but you know, you know, refer to my department as CDBG. Our department is CEDD.
Okay. And that's fine. I stand to be corrected. So if it's C E E D, let's keep it to that. Because there's been times, and I have to tell you, you get off-subject and then you try to take everybody to school. We're not in a classroom here. We're trying to do the business of the city and get it done. And that's all. Thank you.
I hope, I hope that's all for everybody. And I do agree with you sometime, but I will stop when it's necessary to be stopped. So this is, this has been, this has been, I mean, you're discussing now to reduce the timing and I am proposing that a lot of those, you know, current claims should not be presented to you because it's been approved by the mayor or previously approved by your motion by you to be paid.
And, and, and that is, again, we are, we're in a meeting and we're, we're, again, violating our own rules of letting people talk for more than two or three minutes.
Okay. We got, we got to go on, Director. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other issues, concerns, questions, comments from council members, chief of staff, Madam Clerk's office?
Regarding.
Anything, as far as the way you guys want things run?
Go ahead, whoever has.
Okay. And again, for all of us council members, we've got to try to focus on, don't talk for the sake of talking. Let's just talk if it really has something very important to be said. Okay. Vince, you've already spoken once. I'm going to give you courteously another 30 to 45 seconds. Go ahead, Vince.
Thanks, Councilman Chair. I wasn't really finished with my questions. I was going to mention study sessions. You're still going to be doing study sessions?
Correct.
All right. So there's a period right there where you get a lot of your discussion on all the way if you have test stuff at the city council meetings. And on the agenda items, can we consolidate? I'd say the fire department has six items. You know?
You're breaking up. You broke up after fire department.
But they are, if you're saying they got to be put together, they are. The police departments are all together under current claims, so is the fire, et cetera.
Right. But you, they're all grouped together, but they're each individual.
Correct. Correct.
Does that have to be?
I, I don't think you can consolidate those, Vince, because each one is an individual item that they purchased. Okay? All right. So, you know, they could go, you know, a lot of times even when I was working, our departments would try to put everything all in one. So nobody would look at it. Okay? Or actually try to break it up to be less than the amount of money that can be approved. So yeah, I think, I think the way that we're doing it now is proper. So.
Okay. And just one thing, I was taking count on how many times the meeting has broken up. Can I have a current count of 51 times that it's frozen? That's unacceptable.
Fifty what?
51 times that this meeting has frozen.
Yeah, yeah. Administration is aware of it and they are, they are working on it. From what they've found so far, they're finding it's more of a Zoom issue than so much an internet issue. But that's, that's not my field of expertise. That's what they're looking into. Okay. Anything else from any council members? Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
Anything else from council members, clerk, chief of staff?
Uh, one more thing that was discussed, I believe, at the meeting. When we'd always discuss something and we said we want to table it. I think we need to avoid using the word table because table means you're getting rid of it. You make a motion to move it to a study session, but just to say, I want to table this, I think it's a wrong terminology that we were using. And so just to be, you know, make everybody aware, we try not to do that.
Or send it back to administrations, which is.
Yes. Or the best thing to do is send it back to the administration.
Council Chair, I just have one last thing. I'm sorry. And I'll be brief. I know a lot of times we say things like, you know, and I'm, I'm definitely a part of this and I need to catch myself. I'll say, you know, hey, you know, can Director Deeb give us a quick three minutes on this? And it goes on to like 10.
Yeah.
We do that a lot. You know, or I'll say, hey, you know, you know, can Chief Brogan explain to me why this or what this is for? And I know this is good for the resident, but at the end of the day, we're here to conduct business. And so I'm, I've been catching myself. Actually, believe it or not, a resident actually emailed me, I think like six months ago. And I told myself, you know what? Maybe I'm not noticing it. And so I no longer did that because they said, hey, listen, you know, it's great. We know what these things are. A lot of us Google it. You know, you don't, you don't need it as much.
Right. But also residents have said, we got to all cut back on the kudos and congratulations.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. I haven't, I'd like to believe.
And that's why I said during announcements, let's try to keep them to the minimal at the end of the meetings.
Unless they're about the clerk's office.
I'm sorry?
Unless they're about the clerk's office.
About what?
Unless they're about the clerk's office. Okay?
But I also like to think that the kudos has really stopped. I mean, I think, yeah, one, once, I think a meeting, somebody will say it.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is this, a productive meeting?
Can I summarize real quick?
Absolutely.
Okay. The only thing that I took out of changing right now currently on the, on the policies that you have in place are that each member should not speak more than twice for four minutes total. Change that to, I mean, it was 10, we're going to change it to four.
Correct.
So really, the only thing. And then I believe Mariana was going to check on the use of signs or her concern was the signs, the different backgrounds that are being used on Zoom.
Correct.
Okay. Or here or wherever. Okay. The, you were going to, the police chief or we were going to. Okay, um, the, you were going to, the police chief or we were going to meet about the Sergeant of Arms and our policy.
An officer.
Okay, and then voting to go into closed session, we'll do that if you're going to do that for the next one. There's no change in policy. The only one I had was the very first one.
Yeah, so a lot of it was just refresher for a lot of council members.
And the policy, we'll get with Mariana and stuff. Yes, I did notice about when I dropped my whole policy manual and that they're not numbered. Um, this is, I don't know the last time this policy book has been looked at, though. It's very outdated. I know that. And, um, yeah. So, um, and then, and I think Council Pro Tem said, um, to make a motion and then talk negatively about that. We don't want to do that.
Can't make, just say I'm bringing it up for discussion, but I'm against it.
And then about ta, not tabling anything. I think it's more, I think it's very important. Just take action on it.
And make sure you don't tell people during the original comments on agenda items, I'm going to vote no on this.
Right.
You can't do that until a motion is brought up.
You just listen, if you're on the edge, you just listen at that point.
Yes.
So really the only thing currently to change in policy at this moment is the four minutes.
Yeah. Primarily what we're doing through this thing is we're just implementing a lot of the stuff in the procedures. They've already been in place.